Do you guys need more cards?
It wouldn't hurt to put in the dashboard.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. Free enterprise.
No.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Teacher, can I give you this to pass down? Yeah. Thank you. All right, good evening. It is 6:00 PM. I'm calling to order the January 9th, 2024 Fountain City Council meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Chief Cristiani in honor of Law Enforcement Appreciation Day today.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll please. Mayor Thompson, here. Mayor Protemrick.
Here.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Present.
All seven members present. Okay, I ask that people join me in a moment of silence for our fallen canine officer, Canine Phoenix, who worked for our city for a while and is no longer with us. So if we could just have a moment of silence to honor his service, please. Thank you. That takes us on to item 4.1, Presentations. There are none tonight. Item 4.2, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Officers. Mr. Evans.
Sure. The only thing I've got is an update on our bridge damage or speed bump, I would say, that's growing over off of Highway 8587 here down south near the Crest intersection. We've, again, we've discussed that with CDOT several times. They have told us that they would be sending folks out. They have sent an engineer out to look at that. They would be sending folks out to fix that. We have let them know that it seems to be getting worse as the day goes long, especially when I-25 gets shut down and all of the traffic gets diverted over to that bridge. So all I would let everyone know is we shouldn't be surprised if when they do get out there, we ended up with that bridge shut down. Because it seems like that damage to that bridge is getting much more extensive by the day. And when they do shut that down, they're probably not even going to be able to work on it safely without shutting down both of those lanes. So just be prepared for that. If they do let us know beforehand, we'll get that out to the public. But they are aware of it. I'll try to get more specifics from them by the end of the week. And if we do, again, we'll put that out to the public. But as of now, we have not heard any specific days on when they'll be out there. Other than that, you can see the cones. If you do drive that area of town, you've seen the cones go up now, that they will start working on the Indiana Light in that area as well. So we're working with the businesses and the folks in that area to make sure that they have good access to those during that project. But that will be commencing shortly on Highway 8587 as well. So if you can afford that, to avoid that area, please do. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Chief Graham.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Happy New Year. Good to see everybody.
Excuse me, just one minute. I don't know if you guys, I know you guys don't mean to, but your voices are carrying all the way up here, making it real difficult to hear. So if you guys could just, thank you.
Good to see everybody this evening. Not a whole lot to report as far as day-to-day operations. Business as usual. Did want to share one tidbit with you, which there'll be some additional information forthcoming in the near future. But I was contacted last week with the results of our ISO inspection, which we held several months ago. And the long and short of it is, is that we did improve our ISO rating during this inspection. We were previously three. We are now rated at a Class II. So the best way I can explain it, and I've explained this a few times, we essentially went from a C on our report card to a B on our report card. And so there's lots to that. There's lots to unpack about the report. And I will do a more formal presentation and get that information out to the council and the community once I'm done going through that with a fine-tooth comb. But the long and short of it is, is we have made an improvement in our ISO rating, and that ultimately is a good thing for the department and our community. So that's all.
Right, thank you. Chief Cristiani.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing breaking news to report from the Police Department. We're just, I think, a well-rested department now. We got some time off. A fairly uneventful holiday season for us and I think the citizens as well. So Happy New Year to everybody. And just to chime off of what Todd was talking about, the Police Department's already working on a traffic plan for when, I would say, when that gets shut down, because I'm sure it's likely it's going to. So we're going to be working on that and how to route traffic and how to kind of make things flow a little better, especially for emergency personnel. It's going to be challenging for us to get to the south end of town, but we're figuring it out.
Okay, great. Thank you. It's good to know that. Evening, John.
Happy New Year and nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, IT?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Clerk's office.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
The business renewal thing is up and running.
It's up and running.
We did it, and it's up and running. And, all right.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. All righty. Mr. Rick.
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Councilmember Hinton?
Happy New Year, and I have nothing for the council.
All right. Councilmember Estes?
The museum is having their open house, celebrating their 20th anniversary of being open, and that will be this Saturday from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Treats and light snacks will be served.
Okay. Councilmember Hersberg?
Uh, nothing from me.
Councilmember Duncan?
Happy New Year to everyone. Just a friendly reminder, it was on our boards in front of the fire station. A lot of people have been asking, how can I get involved in the city? And we have a list of board and commission openings, and I encourage you to get involved. So please go on our website if you want to get involved in the city. It's a great way to do so.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. All righty. Just a couple of things. This weekend, our Representative Lamborn announced that he will not be running for office again. And I wanted to give a shout-out thanking Representative Lamborn for all his hard work he's done for this area. He has brought millions and millions of dollars back to this community for military projects and especially getting Space Force back here in the last year. For the city of Fountain, though, when we had our PFOS contamination and we were butting heads with the Air Force, we had a meeting with then-Representative Landgraf, who was our state representative and Representative Lamborn's office, and he really did the breakthrough for us, got us into the Pentagon, and really got that situation moving ahead to where we are, where we are today in terms of clean water in our city. So thank you, Representative Lamborn, for that. The Colorado Legislature opens tomorrow, so hold on, everybody. Here we go. You've already seen quite a few interesting bill proposals in the works, and so I think it's going to go fast and furious, so hang on. And since we will be having a presidential primary in less than 60 days, if you have any concerns about the voting system in Colorado, I encourage you to take the tour of the County Clerk and Recorder's Office. I went up last week and took that tour, spent a lot of times asking a lot of questions, and that is open to citizens to sign up to take a tour. And so that is always interesting and good to do. And I'd like to thank the EDC. They're having a group, I think it's monthly or every six weeks or something, some meetings going on. So if you're interested in, you have a business and you're interested in some small business trainings, they had their first one last night. Had somebody there from the Red Cross telling us about a new program they have for businesses that is free online that you can sign up for to make sure that your business is ready for an emergency and to keep running through and after an emergency. So that was, that was very interesting. So a lot of good things going on. And they're going to be doing that program several times this year. So you can contact them at Economic Development Officer and find out how to get signed up for those. Okay, that takes us on to item 6, Public to Be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. And I've got four cards tonight, and I'm going to take them in the order they were received. And the first person is Sam Fortune. So if you could come down and state your name for the record, please. And then we do have a clock on the dais. It's just like a stop sign.
Sam Fortune, Darniel Drive.
Hi.
Evening, Council. I want to talk to you guys again about the city codes and it seems to be the city's inability to enforce said codes. Or when they do decide to enforce them, they nitpick them, and they go after small businesses. Yes, my wife does have a small business. You all know that. Biggie's Little Bavaria. We maintained the rig on our property in Fountain behind a six-foot privacy fence. But I am no longer allowed to maintain the vehicle on our property because your code enforcement has deemed it conducting business when the rig is just sitting there. It's no different than a rig, say, the Bud Light truck sitting at the top of CNS Road. The taco truck sitting two blocks down from there. That doesn't work in Fountain. And I can guarantee you, the house sitting on top of CNS Road, you ain't got a liquor license. But it seems, those trucks and those vehicles have been there for years, but it seems your code enforcement department just wants to go after particular people. People who tried to bring something good to Fountain, but instead have chased it away. Have you all had a chance yet, since the last time I was here, to look at the codes? I bet not. I had pictures for you tonight. I drove around town, not more than 20 minutes. I counted over. Now, these are the violations that were accused against me. Over 47 different violations. A bunch of them are within two blocks of this very building. And I guarantee you, you all know which house I'm talking about. So until this gets rectified, your code enforcement department actually gets trained on what they're doing, and the city actually starts doing something about codes, we're going to make this a bi-weekly event. Good evening, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune. The next person I have is Ruth Voss. Please come down and state your name for the record.
Ruth Voss. So I'm here today to tell you guys about the problems at Villa at Mesa Ridge Apartments. They're right behind Safelace. The foundation is causing cracks in the walls. Pipes are broke, doors aren't shredding correctly, and the floors feel like a roller coaster. There are serenets coming up from the shower drains. There is also sink holes in two apartments. I have pictures here if you would like to see them.
You can pass them to the city clerk if you might to.
Okay. I have called on to code enforcement and the Independent Center Home Inspector, and they've been helping out majorly. I just want to let you guys know that there is problems there. And I do have here pictures, and I do have the home inspectors addressing these problems. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you for letting us know about it. Appreciate it. It sounds like you're in contact with the right people.
I'm trying. I'm really trying for these people.
Right.
And Ms. Voss, just so everyone knows, we are aware Tish has been doing a great job of keeping us in communication with what's going on with you all out there. We're very, very sorry that you're having to deal with that. I hope everyone understands that the city isn't involved with inspecting foundations or anything inside of a building. That's Pike Peak Regional Building. But we are taking this very seriously. And I have personally been in contact with the vice president, two vice presidents of the company that built the building. And even though onsite, they've asked us not to contact them, I will continue to contact them every day until we get something taken care of for you. So we're here to support you. I wish we could do more. We really can't. Tish and I in code enforcement will be with Regional Building as well. Regional Building has responsibility for the permitting and the inspections inside the building. So Tish, I think, Tish, you've been out there five, six days, the last five or six days. So she will continue to support you. And Tish, we appreciate you taking that time. But we just want you to know, we feel very badly that you're having to deal with that. And Tish is a great representative. Anything you need, continue to let her know, and we'll do everything we can for you, okay?
All right, thank you. I appreciate you guys.
You bet.
Thank you very much. The next card is Carol Rafferty. I'm sorry, I probably didn't say your name right.
That's okay. I don't know how it works. Hi, I'm Carol Rafferty. I just want to make sure that you guys are aware that as business owners, we're required to have a business license that's now $65, and that's only here in Fountain. If I would have my business in Colorado Springs, I would pay nothing, and I get so much more. I get grants, I get opportunities. There's no opportunities here in Fountain. And I would like for you guys to think about that whenever you're thinking of giving everybody a certain amount that they have to pay. $65 might not be a lot for a big business. For a small business owner or crafter or anything on the side, $65 is a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last card I have is from Linda. And if you could come up and state your name for the record, please.
Linda Dickman. I am also one of the people from Villas at Mesa Ridge, only I'm one of the ones that's sinking. And I've been sinking for two years. And so I am here today because Tish has been a godsend. And I wish... Two years ago, I wish she would have been there.
Thank you. That's a, are those apartments, not townhomes, correct?
Correct. They're apartments.
Okay.
Just opened up three, two and a half, three years ago. Two years ago during COVID. It's not our project. We did not build those, Mr. Fortune. Once the engineers tell us it's buildable, then we do that.
Remember from the audience wants to ask a question, they need to come up to the microphone or make an appointment with the staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
The same complex that's built on top of a swamp, right? No, there's not a swamp there, no. I could have sworn there's a swamp back there. Y'all live over there, is there a swamp back there?
Okay. We're addressing the members of the council. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. I don't have any more cards. We're going to go on to Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There are no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. We have Items A and B for Consent Agenda. What would council like to do? Councilmember Estes?
Move to approve consent.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, that takes us on to Item A, Old Business. There is none. Item nine, New Business. A, Considerations on Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. There were none. Item B, Resolution Number 24-001, a resolution affirming and approving the general fund operating mill levy for fiscal year FY 2024. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. John Lewis, Finance Director. As you are aware, when we received our first assessed values, I think it was back in September, there was about a 29% increase in assessed values for the city of Fountain. At that time, the state was hoping that a certain legislation or certain House bill was going to get passed, which would have allowed some of us to receive a refund of our own Tabor money and eventually eliminate the Tabor restriction that the state had, which, of course, got voted down. So then the state met quickly and came up with a, some new legislation that subtracted $55,000 from each home, reduced the assessment rate from 6.765 to 6.7. The El Paso County assessors worked very diligently and sent out new assessment rates, which we received about a week and a half ago. And now those new assessed values have, show about a 19%, 19.8% increase over the prior year. So as, as you know, the, the budget was passed with ordinance in 1796, back in December, on December 12th. And, and we didn't have those assessed values. So knowing that you wanted to give some type of a decrease in the mill levy, which, which we're allowed to do this year, to, to give some forgiveness for the property taxes that would come to the city, and that reduction would be for all the citizens of Fountain, we, we couldn't have the confirming and, and approval of the mill levy back in December. We had to wait till now. So we are suggesting a mill levy reduction from 10.239 to nine mills. Our Tabor restriction is we, we can't take a 5.5% increase without eventually giving a Tabor refund or asking the voters to allow us to keep it. So instead, this would be a 4.85% increase over the prior year on just the city. over the prior year on just the city portion of the, of the property tax. And just as a comparison, and looking at an article from El Paso County, they're giving basically an 8.9% increase, or excuse me, decrease in their mill levy. We're giving in excess of 12% decrease in our mill levy. So we're giving a larger decrease than the county. But with that, I will leave it up to you to discuss if you want to stick with the nine or use some other figure.
Thank you. And normally, we do the mill levy and the budget at the same reading.
At the same time, yes.
But because of the challenges this year we had with the special session and everything going on, we're doing it separate.
Right.
And so that's just different this year. And so what we're trying to do with this new law that the state passed just last year, giving us the okay to adjust our mill levy annually without having to go back to the voters, you know, back and forth, which is something people are always concerned about. So we're taking advantage of that this year. And instead of saying leaving our mill levy at the normal rate, and then if we go over, we give you a refund in the spring or, or next year sometime, we're saying we're going to give you that money in your pocket right now because we think we, we, that you need it right now. We're hoping, and, and I think the thing that's really nice about ours is the, the decrease that the, very small decrease the state gave to residential properties. By doing it this way within the city, it includes business properties.
That is correct.
It includes everyone. So, so this is helpful to everyone because the business owners didn't get anything with that residential property decrease that the state did.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. So that said, Councilmember Duncan, do you, do you have a question?
I just want clarification. So you said 4.85 was an increase on the cities or a decrease?
We, we will have a 4.85% increase over the prior year instead of the full 19.8% increase, which is the increase in assessed values that we receive from the assessor.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions from any other council members? Okay, are there any questions from anyone in the audience or anyone online?
No one online, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve Resolution 24-001, a resolution affirming and approving the general fund operating mill levy for fiscal year 2024.
Councilmember Applegate?
Second.
Okay, before we vote, we do have some, a council member that has a question up here.
So what I heard, John, is that I thought that we were also making a decision if it was going to be at nine or 12% that we were going to get...
So, so the motion was for nine, but that, by the 9% mill levy, that is a 12.9% reduction.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
I got it, thank you.
Sure. Okay. No, it's a good clarifying question. All right, any further deliberation up here? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you for one of the toughest years this has been
You're welcome.
To get the budget done. All righty. We takes us on to Item 10, City Council Agenda Requests. City Council shall use this time to request any items for future consideration. I'm going to start to my left tonight here. Councilmember Rick?
I don't have anything for the future agenda, but I do have something I'd like to say later on, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Corey?
Nothing tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
It's going to take me a while.
You're all right. You're okay.
You still answered, right?
I know what you meant.
All right. We're switching his name to Councilmember Applegate, so it's going to, after being Councilmember Corey for two years. So, Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Estes?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Hersberg? Still getting used to saying that one.
And nothing tonight.
Councilmember Duncan?
I don't have anything.
All righty, and I have no agenda requests. All righty, and Councilmember Rick, you wanted to say something before we excuse the meeting?
Yes. I just want to say that I looked on the ColoradoSprings.gov website, and it says, "Most business licenses are $110 annually. Refer to the city code below or specific license page for details." So your specific business may not get charged anything from Colorado Springs, but generally, they charge $110 per business.
Thank you so much for finding that out. We just have a lot to offer. Wanted to make sure people know about that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, announcement of an executive session. We have none tonight. Got so excited, it put this last page of my agenda away. All righty, seeing none? 6:26, this meeting is adjourned.